Is Wednesday, December 6th, and I call to order this regular session of the City of Bloomington Common Council. Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Scambalory?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Volin?
Here.
And do we have Sims?
Councilmember Sims won't be with us tonight, but I believe we have Councilmember Rosenbarger on Zoom.
Or Rosenbarger.
Mr. Lucas, do you see any indication that Councilmember Rosenbarger is with us yet?
She appears to be on Zoom. It's not clear if she can enable her camera or audio, so I'll work with her to get that sorted out.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll invite Vice President Piedmont Smith to offer our land and labor acknowledgement now.
We recognize that the City of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people, and we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of the land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, including Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous and other people of color, and commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity.
Thank you. Continuing with our, an overview of our agenda for the evening, we'll begin tonight with an approval of minutes for our organizational meeting on January 11th, 2023. That's noted here on the agenda as a regular session in error. It's correctly referred to as our organizational meeting. For, also for our regular sessions on February 1st and February 15th of 2023. We'll then move into reports, including reports from council members. I am not aware of any reports from the mayor and city offices or from council committees, but there is time on the agenda for that if they, they are, if they come up. We'll then move into our first of two periods of public comment. We'll then take up appointments to boards and commissions, and then move into legislation for second readings and resolutions. Included there is ordinance 2329, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction, and installation by the City of Bloomington, Indiana of certain extensions and improvements to the city's sewage works, sewage works utility, the issuance and sale of revenue bonds to provide funds for the payment and costs thereof, and the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of such sewage works and other related matters. Also, under legislation for second readings and resolutions, we'll take up ordinance 2330, an ordinance concerning the construction of additions and improvements to the waterworks of the City of Bloomington, Indiana, the issue of revenue, issuance of revenue bonds to provide the costs thereof, the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of said waterworks, the safeguarding of the interests of the owners of said revenue bonds, other matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of bonds, and repealing ordinances inconsistent herewith. We'll then move into legislation for, for first reading. There are two items included there. The first is ordinance 2331, to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel Regarding Amending Chapter 2.23 Community and Family Resources Department by adding Section 2.23.240, closed captioning, in places of public accommodation. Also there, also under that heading is the appropriation ordinance 2308, to specially appropriate from the General Fund, Economic Development Lit Fund, Parks and Recreation Fund, the Rental Inspection Program Fund, Local Road and Street Fund, Parking Facilities Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, Vehicle Replacement Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and Fleet Maintenance Fund expenditures not otherwise appropriated, appropriating various transfers of funds within the General Fund, Economic Development Lit Fund, Parks and Recreation General Fund, Local Road and Street Fund, Parking Facilities Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, Solid Waste Fund, Fleet Maintenance Fund, and appropriating additional funds from the Rental Inspection Program Fund and Vehicle Replacement Fund. We'll then come to our second of two periods of public comment. We'll take up matters of council schedule, including the 2024 Annual Council Legislative Schedule, and then we'll adjourn. So with that, let's move to the approval of minutes, please.
Madam President, I move the approval of the following minutes: January 11th, 2023, special session, February 1st.
Organizational meeting.
Organizational meeting, excuse me. I'll repeat that. January 11th, 2023 organizational meeting, February 1st, 2023, regular session, February 15th, 2023, regular session.
It's been moved and seconded. We'll, just by way of information for the public, when we have members participating electronically via Zoom, we always do a roll call vote for all items. So just to let you know that. Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll on the motion to approve.
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Cool. Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
Thank you all. That passes. So continuing on to reports, we'll go to, first to reports of council members. I'd like to start on Zoom first. Councilmember Rosenbarger.
No report tonight. Thank you. Sorry. I was late getting started.
Thank you. But Councilmember Flaherty?
No report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, just to let the public know that I have my last constituent meeting of the year, this Saturday, December 9th, at 11:00 a.m., and that will be via Zoom. And the link, link can be found on the city council page on the web. So www.bloomington.in.gov/council. And then if you click on my name, you'll see the link on the right. So I welcome people in District 5, but anybody is, is welcome to join that meeting. And of course, my district will be changing to District 1 starting January 1st, so shout out to, to people in those neighborhoods as well. We'll be talking about some common city services and how best to, to access them, and then priorities for the upcoming year and, and overall for the new term of the city council, which starts on January 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
I have no report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg.
No report.
Councilmember Smith?
No report. Thank you.
And Councilmember Volin?
Yes, I have a report. I'm not sure how it was that Indiana University came to be placed exactly where it was in 1820, or at least when the Constitution was made in 1816. I think at the time Monroe County was sort of midway between the Ohio River and the expected state capital of Indianapolis. But for whatever reason, it was placed here. And then for the next 150 years, we discovered, and I see Utilities Director Vic Kelson in the audience, we discovered that we had a water problem, that there was inadequate water supply. And for the first 150 years of the university and the town and the county's existence as organized places, there was no reliable water supply for the growing community. We finally got it in the form of Lake Monroe. And so I think a lot of people here remember back in 2006, when a city county councillor, a former city county councillor up in Indianapolis, publicly proposed a 60-mile pipeline from Indianapolis to Lake Monroe to take out 90 million gallons of water a day, that it raised a hue and cry here locally, and it actually got the attention of then-Governor Mitch Daniels, who put the gabash on the project, which I was very encouraged by. And so when I got a letter, when we received a letter recently describing something similar, I took notice. Apparently, there is a new district called the LEAP District. It's supported by the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. And LEAP stands for Limitless Exploration/Advanced Pace Innovation District, located on more than 9,000 acres in Boone County, basically Lebanon. And there aren't enough water resources to sponsor the $2 billion investment that the state and the, through the IEDC, is making in this area. So they're planning a similar pipeline from Lebanon to basically Tippecanoe County. And so there is an organization called Save the Wabash H2O, which is protesting this, and they have gotten the attention of, and the, and legislative resolution, at least from one town, but including the towns of Attica, Battleground, Covington, Monticello, Shadland, and the communities that we can most identify with the metropolitan area of Lafayette and West Lafayette. The counties of Fountain, Tippecanoe, and White are all concerned about this basically taking of water to a county that doesn't really have it. And so I was encouraged, I was, I thought about authoring a resolution, but it looks like with the usual legislative jam of items that come at the end of the year, including a piece of legislation of my own, instead of offering a resolution, I'm planning to write a letter in support of Save the Wabash H2O, to protest the movement of water in the same way that threatened our community for a short time in 2006. And I wanted to bring it up now, just to say that I was doing it, and that I would encourage not only any of my colleagues here to join me in signing the letter, which I hope to have ready before next week, but to also encourage our colleagues in the county to sign on, because I think that they ought to have the same concerns that we and we do about our fellow localities further north. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention and to say that I think that we should be opposing the movement of water. I mean, again, we didn't have a say in this community receiving IU in the first place. It probably should have been located where there'd be reliable water as well. But now that we're here, and now that the state has built Lake Monroe, I think that we should be, you know, judicial, I mean, they built Lake Monroe to serve the area, not to serve the whole state. And I think we should tell the state that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have no report this evening. So with that, let's continue to reports from the mayor and city offices. Mr. Lucas, I'm not aware of any tonight. Is that correct? Okay. Nor am I aware of any reports from council committees. Okay. So that brings us to our first of two periods of public comment. If you would, if you have an interest in offering public comment here in chambers, please raise your hand so I can get a count. Thank you. And Mr. Lucas, can you please extend our invitation on Zoom while you go ahead and approach the podium here in council chambers?
Yes, if there are any members of the public that would like to offer a comment now, please use the raise hand feature. You can find that in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. If you can't locate that, please send a chat to the meeting host.
Thank you. And while we're waiting for people to raise their hands on Zoom, let's go ahead and begin here in chambers. If you would, please sign in. Please share your name for the record, and you might want to stay close to the microphone.
This one?
And pull that down a little bit, too.
There we go.
Thank you.
I'm not a protest.
You'll see a timer up on screen and on the little screen to your left, and you'll have five minutes. Welcome.
All right, thank you. My name is Mark Combs. I was here a couple of weeks ago talking about a sewage leak into a pond that we had a gentry. I am back today to, for a couple of things. One, I have a photograph of the pipe, the sewage pipe, that was drilled into for the telecommunications. And right there, I don't know the diameter of that pipe. It's at least four inches, maybe six. But that's a massive break in that system. And that thing was leaking for weeks before we knew it and got somebody out there to repair it. So just think of the amount of sewage coming through that into our pond. And I spoke last time about, there did not seem to be much of a sense of urgency about this matter. I'm coming to find out, I'm not finding out, but I will. Part of the problem of getting it cleaned up, I was told by waste, wastewater, was the cost. So, you know, I understand this pretty big cost, taking care of all this, the pond. But ultimately, it seems to me that the contractor who broke the pipe, they should be responsible for the cost. And so I'm not sure why it took so long to get things going. I mean, they came out immediately and repaired it, but to fix the pond, which it seems to be taken care of now. The water's testing clean. But why is cost a factor? I mean, this is a health emergency, in my opinion. Why is cost a factor? I'm kind of, I'm concerned that the wastewater, whatever utilities, I'm kind of concerned they don't have a report tonight. Did they have a report last week or the week before? Anything where they mentioned this? No, I'm guessing? Okay. So why not? I mean, you, I'm guessing you all don't know anything about this, other than what I've told you and a couple of other people who spoke about it. Why, why is this continuing? I mean, this is not a new thing. This has been going on for, I've only lived here six months, but this was going on way before I got here, where things are damaged. Why is that being allowed to continue? I mean, is it lack of training? Is it lack of, we don't care, we're getting paid? What's going on here with this development? I, I'm looking for answers. I had a knock on my door a couple day, last week, and Boris Ladwig was there. He and I sat down for about 20 minutes. He has some very pointed questions. I gave him honest answers. I don't know if there'll be anything in the paper or not, but I'm going to reach out to him again about this issue of, it's too expensive. You know? This, this is not how this project should be run, in my opinion. I'm not a contractor. I don't know anything about this business. But I do have experience with accidents and insurance and that kind of thing. And in trucking, if something like this happens, you take care of it now, get it done, and then figure out the rest later. I don't know that I have anything more than that. But this, this is a problem. It really is. And it just keeps happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Combs. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. And is there anyone else here in chambers who would like to offer comment? Seeing none, that'll close our first of two periods of public comment, which takes us to appointments to boards and commissions. Are there any to be made this evening? Seeing none, let's move to our legislation, including legislation for second readings and resolutions.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2329 be introduced and read by the clerk by total synopsis only.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
It's Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
That motion passes. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2329, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction, and installation by the City of Bloomington, Indiana of certain extensions and improvements to the city's sewage works utility, the issuance and sale of revenue bonds to provide funds for the payment of the costs thereof, and the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of such sewage works and other related matters. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance authorizes the City of Bloomington to issue its sewage works revenue bonds of 2024 in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $55 million. The 2024 bonds will be issued to finance the second phase of modernizing the Dillman Road WWTP, the Blucher Pool wastewater treatment plant, the collection systems project, other projects, and to pay costs of issuance of the bonds.
Thank you.
May I be adopted?
Thank you. Mr. Kelson, welcome.
Good evening. Vic Kelson, Utilities Director. I also have with me Jared Hall of Cronin Associates and Hannah Clendenning from Barnes &amp; Thorndberg. They conducted all the financial and legal arrangements surrounding these bonds. We're talking about bonds that are in the sewer utility, which includes the stormwater utility financially. So we are talking about projects for sewer and projects for stormwater. And there's a little history with this. In 2016, in the fall of 2016, we received a letter from the Indiana Department of Environmental Management requiring that we begin taking action to increase the capacity of the Dillman Road wastewater treatment plant. We had exceeded 90% of rated capacity for three consecutive years at that plant. So it was time. We began right away working with IDEM and others on that effort, and we did a first round project that was $23 million. That project was completed a couple of years ago, and it put us very close to where we needed to be, but we aren't there yet. We had left a few things undone. Some of them were improvements to digesters and things like that. And so now we're ready to go on to that second phase of that sewer project. Unfortunately, in the meantime, we had a pandemic and a huge onset of massive increases in costs. So the second part of it's going to be more expensive than the first part was. But most importantly, when we are completed, when we have completed this next round of projects at the Dillman Plant, our rated capacity will be increased from 15 to 19 million gallons per day. We brought the rate review for that, for the sewer and the storm to the council last November. It was November 16th was the night I presented. So it has taken that long to get everything approved by IDEM and make sure that we're going to actually get the rate increase that we had intended. So, so that's the story of the, of the sewer one. The stormwater bond, there have been a number of projects, most famously the Big Dig back in the 1990s. We did the Hidden River Project here a couple of years ago, and we have now replaced the entire Clear Creek Tunnel all the way from, from near the Von Lee all the way down to First and Washington. We have one section left, and it's basically that last portion, essentially from Dunn Street over to Indiana. And Sixth and Indiana is the intersection that always floods during major rain events. We have had to do land acquisition and easement acquisition and so forth related to that. And that project, which we thought would be less expensive, turns out to be, it looks like it's going to be in the $5 to $6 million range. So we have rearranged the funding plans that we had for projects in the stormwater utility, and we decided we would prefer to bond for those rather than try to do it all pay-as-you-go. So that is the story of, of these bonds. They're coming to you later than we had hoped, but we are ready to go and very much ready to roll with the Sixth and Indiana project that would be completed over the summer next year before school comes, before school starts again. So I'm happy to answer questions, but first I'd like to have Jared and Hannah present their materials. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jared Hall, Cronin Associates. We're the financial advisors on this transaction. I believe Mr. Lucas, he emailed you guys. I just have like a four or five-page kind of slide handout here. If you can go ahead and, yeah, thank you. So as Vic mentioned, just to kind of give you a little background, you guys did approve rates last year in November. Those rates went into effect over two phases. The first phase was a 12% increase, and that went into effect January 1 of 2023. The next phase, 6%, will go into effect January 1, 2025. And then also, there was an increase to the stormwater rates for the related project of 26%. And those went in January 1, 2023. Just a reminder, the rates when they were designed, when they contemplated these projects, and so the first thing is the rates support the operations of the utility to make sure they can sustain those operations. The next thing is, is debt service on the bonds. And so Vic touched on it a little bit. When the rate study was prepared, they had looked at projects, what are identified as 2023 projects, which are the ones that were included in this bond ordinance. They're going to be in 2024. And then there's another round of projects in 2025. And so all of those were included in the rate analysis. And then you also, your rates support any depreciation or replacements and extensions that would come up over the next, you know, handful of years. So the rates are already in place to afford and support these projects, or the repayment of the bonds for these projects. That's always typically the, the major question when having these discussions. You can go ahead and go. Yeah. So this is the sources and uses of funds. So right now, we're looking at approximately $50 million, $500,000 bond. There'll also be some funds on hand. Since those rates went in place January 1, 2023, there was an allowance in there for, as you kind of go pay-go projects. And so we've earmarked, in order to try and help keep the bond amount as low as possible, we've utilized some cash on hand that's, that's available to apply towards these projects. But down below there under sources of, excuse me, uses of funds, you'll see we have kind of four main projects. The Dillman Road Treatment Plant, the Blucher Pool Treatment Plant, there's a collection system component, other, which is, I don't know if you, the, the service, right, that's some service center. Vic, if you guys have questions specifically on that, Vic can talk about that. And then we have Stormwater Project that Vic just talked about. Also required would be a debt service reserve on these bonds. So we're going to go ahead and fund that up here with bond proceeds. And then you have basically your soft costs, underwriters discount, bond insurance, and cost of issuance, legal and financial fees. So total being around just, just shy of $51 million, $500,000 total. The next schedule, so here's where we, we've done the feasibility analysis to determine the affordability. So you'll see 2024 being the first year. And our test year, we used 2022. We don't have 2023 data yet, but if you take that first $23 million, $500,000, that was your sales for 2022. We know that we had a 12% increase across the board in 2023, so that's about $2.8 million. Stormwater fees were 3.2, and we apply the 26% increase, which is about $840,000. You have penalties, interest, come up with $30 million, $800,000 total revenues. We've looked at the budgets and talked with staff to determine what we think, you know, your oper, the operating salaries going forward, also providing for inflation. So that's the 15 million. And then you have those adjustments there. Those are really specific. And talking with, with Vic and the rest of the staff at CBU of O&M expenses that will be coming online here that, that haven't occurred in 2022. So we're making sure we account for that. We have an allowance for our payment in lieu of taxes. And when we factor all that in, and you have net pledge revenues of about $12.5 million. On this $50 million bond, we're expecting a 24, 7.4 million, but once we get full interest, it's about 8.1 million. So you have bond coverage down there at the bottom, so 170%. 125 is kind of the, the minimum threshold. 150 is, is good, and you're at 170. So this is a, this is a really highly desirable, marketable bond, and it's not going to put too much strain on your, you know, the utility to keep doing what they need to do as far as maintaining their system and everything like that. And then finally, just kind of the timetable. So CBU met on November 6th. You, you folks met on November 15th for first reading. Of course, we're here tonight for second reading and consideration of adoption. Once the bond ordinance is adopted, we'll go for a rating. We'll submit for rating. It takes about a month. Currently, you guys have an A-plus rating on the utilities. Once we get that rating, we can go to market the bonds, looking at late January, and then with a closing mid-February. So that time, Vic, excuse me, you know, CBU can, will have the funds and can let the project and, you know, get work started. That is all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Kelson or Mr. Hall? Or is there a third presentation or no? Okay.
Hannah's, yeah, if there's legal questions, I think Hannah's happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. Questions for Mr. Kelson or Mr. Hall? Councilmember Volan?
I've got a couple. One of them is about a project. You mentioned Sixth and Indiana. I mean, I understand that's part of a bigger, like that's the whole Big Dig downtown thing. Can you at least go into a little detail about what needs to be done at that intersection? I know that it floods pretty heavily.
Yes, that's, that's very, it's a very complicated situation. If you've ever walked behind the Von Lee, there is one grate there. And the, and the culvert that is located under that alley is actually too small. So what we're really talking about, sort of the headworks of the system. That's where the water comes off the campus, and it has to be captured. Some of the water comes straight down Clear Creek, past Dunn Meadow, and then comes, and then enters the culvert.
Did you say Clear Creek?
Well, or Campus River or whatever they call, no, it's Clear Creek.
Is it?
Yeah, Spanker's Branch is on the other side of downtown. It's, some of that water comes right into an inlet that's, that's right there near Sixth and Indiana. But when there's a big flood event, a big rain event, it's actually more than can go underneath the bridge there next to Franklin Hall. And so that water will flow out across Dunn Meadow into Sixth, into Indiana, and then it comes down to Sixth. So we get flooding there. And there's not enough capacity on the inlets behind the Von Lee to take in all that water. So between the undersized culvert and the undersized inlets, that's what causes that to flood. When you, this is what been since the 90s, right? I was in grad school at the time. So this whole system, you have to build it from the downstream end to the upstream end because everything has to go downhill. So if I dig, say I started at the top and dug it deeper, well, there'd be, there'd be a wall in the way. So you need to go from the downstream to upstream. This is the last upstream section of that, of that entire operation. So that's what's happening there. So there will be more inlets and a larger culvert behind the Von Lee. And it is a complicated project over there, too, because it's this far, 17 inches from the foundation of the Von Lee.
When do you expect that, if everything goes according to plan, when do you expect that improvement to be complete?
It would be, we will begin it hopefully in the early part of, of, we'll be beginning in an early part of '24 and completing it by the end of the summer. So we've, our crew went in and replaced, assisted with relocations of electrical conduits there. And so that's done, so that we're, we're ready to roll and to get this thing constructed by.
News is long overdue. The other question I had, if I can ask one more?
We have other folks queued up. So let's go to Councilmember Piedmont Smith and Councilmember Rallo.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kelson. The, under other projects, of course, the new service center is, basically comprises all those other projects. Can you talk a little bit about the timeline for that and what other approvals may be needed for the, that project to go ahead?
Yes, that's, that's also complicated, of course, because there's so many pieces to it. We are presently working, we just started this week to break ground on restoring the property into a developable form. So that, that's filling in the trickling filter, eliminating buildings that need to be demolished and things like that. All of that is presently underway. When that's completed, we need to do that anyway. So that when that's done, that entire property will be ready for us to reuse it, whether now or in the future. The, we also, just this week, the Utility Service Board approved the architectural and engineering design for the service center and for the entire campus with the garage and the storage yard. This, they have, that was approved this week, and they'll be working on it. And we expect to have a 50% design complete with a financial analysis by sometime in the second quarter of 2024. And then once we have that, then we'll have the financial information. We would need to inform of the water rate case that, you know, council has asked us to do them every, on a regular basis. We have one scheduled for '24. That information would be part of assembling a 2024 rate case, assuming that was approved by council sometime mid-year. It would then go to IURC for approval of the, of the rate and approval of the financing. So the soonest we could possibly, IURC has 300 days to rule. So the earliest we could expect to break ground on a project like that would be mid to, mid, you know, second quarter, third quarter 2025, with completion likely in 2026. So it's, there's a lot of pieces, and there's a couple of places where there's a sort of an off-ramp on the road if we, if it turns out to be far more complicated or far more expensive than we anticipate. So, but right now, we've, we've continued along. And the sewer part of it will partially pay for the current project that we're doing. And then once the big project begun, it would pay the sewer part of the big project. If the big project eventually got canceled for some reason, then we could, then it would be, that money could be used for something else and would reduce whatever happens on the next sewer rate review, which would, right now, be scheduled for '26.
So you mentioned the water rate case for next year. But here we're assigning some funding as part of the wastewater bond for this project. So, so is it, since it's a service center for both wastewater and water, some funding can come from each or for each?
That's right. It will, it will have to be paid for 60% from sewer and 40% from water. So if, if it were to pass, come to pass that we didn't proceed with the project, the dollars that are currently allocated to that in the bond, those dollars could be set aside or used for a different project that would offset the cost of another project in the future.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
I have a question that's tangentially related because we heard during public comment about a sewage leak. Is this appropriate for me to ask a question regarding that?
Is it related to this legislation?
Well, it is insofar as that it involves sewage and it involves, you know, our infrastructure, which I think has been affected and may continue to be affected by drilling. So I'm concerned about it. Certainly it's related to the cost.
If you wish, I could, I could address it during the second round of public comment, if you wish.
Well, I think it's appropriate right now. Okay, I think it's appropriate because it involves our infrastructure and costs and so forth. And it's, we're reviewing the costs in various projects. And this might be one that we need to consider because clearly this, 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 well, I won't belabor this, but it occurred in August and wasn't discovered until November. And by that point, it had poisoned the pond. And I guess my, I'd like to hear your point of view, Director Kelson. But I also included in that, have there been fines issued by IDEM to any party at this point? And in terms of cost, is there reimbursement by the contractor? Is the contractor insured for this? And has this happened elsewhere as well? Or is this a continuing concern or threat to our community?
Okay, that's a lot of questions, but I'll cover every, everything in it. So we didn't know about the strike. And it's, it is not clear that water began flowing out right away. The pipe that was struck was underground. So before a lot of water could flow, some soil had to move away. So if you imagine the pipe is buried in soil, that soil had to be washed away before you could get a lot of flow. So it may have been flowing a little, and then more and more and more. And then eventually it gives way and whoosh, you get a lot. We found out about it, and I don't know the dates. But this has all been covered in the two press releases that we've issued about the matter from CBU. When the residents from the neighborhood reported that the pond stunk and there were dead fish, we were, we had our environmental team out there right away. And we had our transmission and distribution team out there right away. And they discussed the situation, and they came to me. We had a talk in my office about what to do. And of course, this is a situation that is the responsibility of the contractor who struck the, who struck the force main. We didn't think it prudent to argue with the contractor upfront. We thought the prudent thing to do was get to work. So that very day, with no consideration of cost, we hired a sewage pumping company to come out and start pumping out 2,000 gallon loads of water from the contaminated pond and to take it to the Dillman Plant. So we started doing that that very day. We also, the next day, treated the grass and the soil around the pond with sodium bisulfate bleach, bleach, to make sure that if people were walking out there with their dogs or whatever, that there weren't any E. coli in the soil or in the grass over there. We monitored the situation. We continued to take samples for a couple of weeks while we continued to pump that pond out with our contractors. As we began the project to clean up the mess, and clearly nobody knows when it actually started flowing into the pond, but we know it was struck. We found that out from the records from the engineering department for when the permit was issued for, for the, the work that was being done there by the fiber company. So we contacted them right away. They've been, they've been involved, and they know what it costs. They do, they, we have, when that project began, when this, it was an AEG contractor that struck it. AEG is using the parking lot or the large asphalt surface at the Bluechur Pool Wastewater Plant as a, as a laydown yard for the materials for that project. So we have really close relationship with them, and they've been very responsive to us when we come to them with these kinds of things. So they're well aware that they're going to have to pay for it. They're going to pay every dollar, but I don't know if we've invoiced them yet for, for pieces of it. But we handled it as quickly as we could, and we did not consider the cost at the time. We just simply said, let's get to work because there was sewage in a pond, right? You don't, you don't just leave it there. As far as how big a problem this is, we have had quite a number of strikes in town. How does that happen? A lot of people have asked. Well, what, they're directionally drilling. So they've got a drilling head on the, at the end of an apparatus that's underground, and they can steer it. And they have a targeted elevation that they shoot for. But we know when we go out and do locates to locate pipes or when the electric company locates wires, they have a really good idea where it is in plan view, right? They know if I'm standing on top of it or not, but they can't be quite sure how deep it is because the land surface elevation does change with time. And there aren't good records for when these things were installed. So for example, water mains are almost always about four feet down because that's how deep you have to bury them to keep them from freezing in the wintertime. And we don't want to put them any deeper than that because you got to dig up more to fix them, right? So water mains were usually pretty close on how deep they are. But with sewer laterals, there's no record of that. So the lateral that comes out of the customer's home and eventually makes it to the sewer, we don't know the elevation. People can guess where it is by having an idea how deep the sewer is, but that's not a perfect estimate. So we have had quite a few sewer laterals struck. We've had some water pipes struck. There've been some gas mains that have been struck and electrical wires that have been struck. And in every case, the contractors, whether it's AEG or any of the other drilling contractors that are drilling in Bloomington right now, they're all responsible for that. And we've, we've had good success in recovering those dollars. IDEM, to my knowledge at this point, has not issued any fines related to this. But we reported the matter to IDEM immediately when we found out about it because we, we considered it to be a sanitary sewer overflow, even though it was caused by a strike. And we also have reported to IDEM when the work was complete, that the work is complete. We issued press releases to inform the public throughout the process, and we were working with the Gentry Estates Homeowners Association throughout the, throughout the process. In fact, we invited the leader of that organization also was in my office on the day we really began the bulk of the work to explain what we were doing because it's their pond, and we were working on their property. So we wanted them to understand what we were doing and why, and they were very supportive of us. So we've had no, no issues with that on that matter. So we've done the very best we could under the circumstances. It's a challenging thing, and clearly you've got dead fish in a stinky pond. That's not what anybody wants. It's not what we want. It's not what the contractor that struck the lateral wants, and it's certainly not what the neighborhood wants. But we did not, we certainly did not say, well, this is going to be too expensive to fix. That never came up. And, and that's not, certainly not the way I roll, and that's not the way CBU rolls.
Thank you for that lengthy explanation. Has the pond been put right?
Yes.
And?
We've sampled it. I think the last samples were last week, and the concentrations of E. coli were below the swimming pool standard.
Okay. And I'm concerned that the sewer breakages could remain undetected. Is that possible? I mean, this occurred six months before. Could it clearly, could it occur, and we wouldn't know about it? Or are you eventually going to find out? I mean.
Eventually you'll find out.
Because it's going to surface somewhere.
This is a chance for me to do some advertising. So if you remember during the, the 2024 budget hearings, I talked about getting a dog. And this is the reason that we wanted to get a dog. A dog can smell sewer gas at much lower concentrations than anything else we have at our disposal. And if there's sewer gas coming up from the surf, from the land surface or from the grass, we're hopeful that the dog can find those kinds of things. So they can walk the neighborhood to see, you know, hopefully, we haven't done it yet. We haven't proved that it works perfectly. But we're hopeful that, that going out there with a sewer sniffing dog will be an effective way to find these things before we have them cause a, you know, failure like this.
Thank you very much.
Additional round one questions? Councilmember Flaherty?
I just had a question about the Dillman wastewater treatment plant upgrades vis-à-vis the ongoing consideration of shifting to anaerobic digestion there. It seemed like most of the improvements were things that are probably needed in any case, like filtration capacity and otherwise, but could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes, we, we completed the filtration improvement a couple of years ago. The big thing, and it happened in the first go-round, too. The biggest expenditure that we're facing over there is switchgear and electrical. It's 40 years old, so you really have to be paying attention to that. So we're doing a lot of switchgear improvements in the coming projects. We're adding one more blower to the aeration. That will get us to the 19 million gallons per day capacity that we need. We're also doing some capacity improvements in our, in our sludge handling there at the Dillman Plant. None of these obviate the possibility of doing anaerobic digestion. And in fact, if we do move ahead with an anaerobic project, it would involve what's called a primary filter. There'd be a rotary filter that we would put, or a disc filter, sorry. I knew that was the wrong word. We'd put a disc filter that would take the, the primary sludge solids out. Those are very good for digestion, for anaerobic digestion. That would actually reduce the amount of biochemical oxygen demand that was arriving at aeration. And that would in itself help to increase the capacity of the plant beyond the 19. So the study for that, I had hoped to present that study to you this month, but the study isn't quite finished yet. They're still working on, on the market analysis for digestible materials. And I'll be, I'll be following it from, you know, anyhow, but that, that will not be coming until January.
Thank you. Additional round one questions? Looking at round two, Councilmember Volan, did your question get answered or did you want to follow up?
It was very thoroughly answered in the exchange between Mr. Kelson and Mr. Rallo. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, I have a quick question about the bond rate. And that is, you know, 7% is not optimal. But we have a history of refinancing these bonds over time, and that's not precluded. by our actions. This is something that we could do, you know, assuming rates fall.
That's correct. Yeah, we would, what we do when we go to market the bonds, so the bond ordinance establishes call provisions, and I believe it's pretty open on this one. So when we go to market the bonds, we will look at kind of if your standard is a 10-year call, there's a price to shorten that call, right? So you say, well, I want to do five years. It's worth three basis points. So we'll do that analysis, especially given, you know, with this conversation three, four years ago, rates are at historic lows. There's not a lot of value in having that call. Now, rates have crept up, so we'll definitely be looking at that. And I've seen a couple of deals here recently where that's been, there hasn't really been a significant cost, let's say, to having a shorter, maybe a seven year call. So we'll definitely want to look at that and keep that in mind as we, as we market these bonds.
Okay, great. Thanks for that information. One other one, but may I? So Mr. Kelson, this has to do with the other projects that are listed in our packet, and it includes the demolition of the existing buildings at Winston Thomas, anticipating a new utilities facility there, and then, and also the design of a new facility there. I was, I was curious about, so we've evaluated these buildings and deemed them useless?
Yes, except for one. There's, there's a, a lot of these buildings are basically falling in on themselves, they're falling into their own basements. They had pumping, they have pumps and things in them, and they're just in terrible condition and not reusable. But there's one building there that it was the superintendent's house. So at the time that this plant was in operation, it was three miles from town, right? There was nothing, not much between downtown and Winston Thomas. So the superintendent actually lived on the premises, and that house is still there. And we have planned, as we've been talking about this project for, well, seven or eight years now, our plan right along has been to preserve that house as a, it will be sort of a meeting space, a place where the public can come and learn about water and sewer and the history of water in Monroe County and Bloomington. We have lots of artifacts. You know, Councilmember Volan talked about the history of water here in Monroe County, and I think it's an important thing for, for people to know about. So that, that meeting room would be available for, for our staff, for, for city hall staff and so forth. And so we're, that building is the one that is really representative of what was there before. We also preserved the lintel when we tore the Griffey plant down. We preserved that nice limestone lintel that was over the front door. We plan to include that in the design of the new service center in some form. And, and we're, there is a historical retaining wall that was removed somewhere in town, and we've let the architects know that the materials for that are actually on the premises at Winston Thomas. And if there were an appropriate use for that, we would reuse that there as well.
Oh, great. Good. Thank you very much.
Additional questions before we go to public comment? Seeing none, if there are any commenters here in chambers for ordinance 2329, if you would please approach the podium. Mr. Lucas, can you please extend our invitation on Zoom?
Yes, if any members of the public are joining us electronically and would like to speak to this ordinance, please raise your hand or send a chat to the meeting host.
Okay, I'm not seeing any commenters here in chambers. Mr. Lucas, are you getting any takers on Zoom?
I am not, no.
Okay, we'll give it just another moment. Anything, Mr. Lucas? Okay, let's come back to council then for any additional questions? Or final comment on ordinance 2329? Councilmember Volan?
I just wanted to say a thanks to Mr. Kelson and to utilities for always thorough work. This is why our utilities are in good shape is that we've invested in them. This is no different. And I'm also glad to see that finally, the long agonizing legacy of the water flowing under downtown Bloomington is going to be fixed by the beginning of the next academic year, especially that area on Six in Indiana that always turns into Lake Indiana when the right kind of storm happens. But yeah, I have no issues with this and glad to hear the explanation about the sewer break, and I am now thinking about getting a dog. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Councilmember Rallo.
Just to echo that Director Kelson has probably been the best equipped director of utilities that I've encountered to answer questions and is tremendously knowledgeable, and I've had faith in his ability to, to meet the challenges that are numerous, obviously, line breaks and so forth that are continual replacements and pumping capacity and everything. So I want to extend my thanks to the director for that. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Flaherty.
Yeah, I'm happy to support this ordinance and appreciate all the planning and proactive thought that goes into all the, the management of emergent challenges. Echoing my colleagues, I think that's something that Director Kelson's really excelled at. The city has benefited greatly from your years of service. Really just getting us back on track in systematic ways to address major and important infrastructure needs over time and their replacement. So just expressing my gratitude for that and yeah, happy to support. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kelson. I just wanted to sincerely thank you for all the work you've done while I've been on council. I think you've done just a superb job of explaining complicated things to us and explaining the rationale for it. So I want to sincerely thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2329?
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes eight zero. Thank you, Mr. Kelson. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2330 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Yes, Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And that passes? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2330, an ordinance concerning the construction of additions and improvements to the waterworks of the City of Bloomington, Indiana, the issuance of revenue bonds to provide the cost thereof, the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of said waterworks, the safeguarding of the interests of the owners of said revenue bonds, other matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes and anticipation of bonds, and repealing ordinances inconsistent herewith. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance authorizes the City of Bloomington to issue its waterworks revenue bond of 2024 in the aggregate, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $95,000 through a forgivable loan program with the Indiana Finance Authority. The 2024 bonds will be issued to a finance water pipe-related inventory and pay costs of issuance of the bonds.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2330 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Kelson, welcome back.
Hi, Vic Kelson, Utilities Director. We've got, this bond is actually a bond that will be, the payment, the expenditures will be reimbursed. This was a grant from the Indiana Finance Authority. This is related to the lead and copper inventory project that we're required to do. That has to be completed by next fall. We've been working on it. We've been digging up, we've been digging up water service lines, both the customer side and the city side for about a year now. There are some that you really can't dig up, and we are in the process of working with a company called Blue Conduit to do a machine learning analysis of the, of the locations or the most likely locations of leaded service lines that may remain in our system. The reason for the grant is that there is a device that has been developed that is called a Swordfish. The Swordfish device actually can identify the material that a service line is made from by being inserted into the pipe. I think it uses sound to do it. At least, that's what was explained to me. So it can tell you whether the pipe has lead in it or not. And so rather than digging, or in places where digging was impractical, you could actually open up the meter, meter pit, take out the meter, and insert the device both onto the customer side of the main, of the service line and onto the city side of the service line. So the idea is that we will use this device to do those identifications. The grant is sufficient to pay for the entire cost of acquiring the Swordfish device and deploying it into our system. We can use it as part of our service line inventory program, and depending on how the timing on that goes, we can also offer to work with our wholesale customers who may still be working on their inventories where they have trouble, we may be able to help them as well. So it's a no cost to the city. We, we received the grant that was developed by Justin Meister, who's our water quality coordinator. This device actually came on the market about six or eight months ago. And so we're very happy to have received the grant, and it is fully reimbursable. So I'll have Jared talk about the technical aspects of the grant itself.
Jared Hall, Cronin Associates. As Vic mentioned, it is, it is a grant. SRF, who is the one, the entity that would be giving the grant to the city, they don't like to call it a grant. What they call it is a principal forgiveness loan. And so it has to be somewhat, I guess, papered up in legal terms as a loan. However, the way it works is we go through kind of the same process, procedure, close on the loan, and then within five years, it's technically forgiven. Hence, you meet certain requirements, which I don't think anybody has never met those requirements. So for all intents and purposes, it's, it's a grant. But the reason a bond ordinance is in front of you is because it has to be drawn up as like a loan.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Mr. Kelson, something to add or just waiting on questions?
No, I'm just here for questions.
Okay, let's open it up for questions then. Councilmember Rallo.
Because it's issued as a bond, do we, do we pay interest? And then is that covered? No, it's not.
No, there's no, there's no interest, there's no repayment. It's, it, it doesn't even show up as a liability on your financial statements. It's a technicality of the entity that is, that is giving, that's why it's, it's a principal forgiveness loan. So there's no interest, there's not even an interest rate associated in a default situation, I guess, as you will.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Seeing none, let's go to the public for comment. If there's anyone in chambers who would like to offer comment, please approach the podium. Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if any members of the public joining us on Zoom would like to speak, please raise your hand in Zoom or send a chat to the host.
I'm not seeing any requests here in chambers. Do we have any requests on Zoom?
Not that I see.
Okay, let's just give it another moment. Mr. Lucas? Okay, let's come back to council for any additional questions? Or any final comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, I wanted to spread out the praises and the thanks. So I will take this opportunity to thank Director Kelson for his excellent work over the last eight years?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half years as Director of City of Bloomington Utilities. I think he's brought a lot of innovation to try to address the, the problems that all utilities face. And the, the anaerobic digestion study is also very exciting, exciting, and I hope that when we get the second report from the consultants, they do, it does point to the financial feasibility of that project. So we'll be, I'll be paying close attention to that in the new year. So I just want to thank him for all of those innovations and that good work. Of course, I will be supporting this free money for the lead and copper pipe identification project, inventory project, and particularly look forward to the dog coming onboard next year that will help us with our sniffing out our sewer problems. So thank you, and I'll be supporting this.
Additional comments?
Might I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
Briefly, I want to thank all the council members for their kind words tonight. Thank you for your kind words tonight. This, I have thoroughly enjoyed the time I've spent here, and it's, these have been really wonderful years for me, and I've enjoyed working with council to help you understand the complexities of what we do. It is, it is a complicated thing, and it goes into all different kinds of disciplines and dimensions, but we have a fabulous staff, and I am so proud of our staff. I'm so proud of everyone who's out working, handling emergencies, the people who run our plants 24/7. And it's, I'm just thrilled that I've had the opportunity to do this, and I will definitely miss this. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2330?
Rallo?
Yes. Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Scambalory?
Yes. Thank you. That passes eight zero. Mr. Kelson, Mr. Hall, thank you, and especially Mr. Kelson, thank you. That takes us to legislation for first readings.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2330, I'm sorry, 20, 2331 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Yes. Sandberg?
Yes.
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
And that, that motion passes? Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2331 to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel Regarding Amending Chapter 2.23, Community and Family Resources Department, by adding Section 2.23.240, closed captioning in places of public accommodation. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance is sponsored by Councilmember Volan and makes amendments to Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code to add a new section 2.23.240 entitled Closed Captioning in Places of Public Accommodation that would require places of public accommodation to activate closed captioning on closed captioning television receivers.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move 2308 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Yes, that was appropriation ordinance 2308.
Oh, I'm sorry, appropriation ordinance 2308.
Yes, second.
Pardon me.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Yes. Smith?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Appropriation ordinance 2308 to specially appropriate from the General Fund Economic Development Lit Fund, Parks and Recreation General Fund, the Rental Inspection Program Fund, Local Road and Street Fund, Parking Facilities Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, Vehicle Replacement Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and Fleet Maintenance Fund expenditures not otherwise appropriated, appropriating various transfers of funds within the General Fund, Economic Development Lit Fund, Parks and Recreation General Fund, Local Road and Street Fund, Parking Facilities Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, Solid Waste Fund, Fleet Maintenance Fund, and appropriating additional funds from the Rental Inspection Program Fund and Vehicle Replacement Fund. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance appropriates various transfers of funds within the General Fund, Economic Development Lit Fund, Parks and Recreation General Fund, Local Road and Street Fund, Parking Facilities Funds, Solid Waste Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and the Fleet Maintenance Fund. It also appropriates additional funds from the General Fund, Rental Inspection Fund, and Vehicle Replacement Fund.
Thank you. And we will take up ordinance 2331 and appropriation ordinance 2308 at our next regular session. That's our final regular session of the year on December 13th. Okay? That takes us to our second of two periods of public comment. If you'd like, here in chambers, please feel welcome to approach the podium. Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes. If there are members of the public that wish to speak, please raise your hand in Zoom by clicking the raise hand feature under your control bar, under the reactions tab or the more tab, or let us know you'd like to comment through a chat to the host.
Okay. And let's begin here in chambers. If you'd like, please confirm your name for the record, if you would, and sign in, and then you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, council. This is Christopher M. G. from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I want to commend this body specifically, Madam President, for scheduling Monday's work session. As the fiscal body for oversight, this is your role. The chamber demands that our government remain accountable, transparent, prudent. Unfortunately, I don't know if we have any, any more information, any less in the dark than we were before on the West Showers project. With all due respect to Deputy Larry Allen, he can only do so much with so little information at his hand. The meeting required the mayor's presence. It also required the consultant hired by Studio Access with actual knowledge of how to construct a 21st century police headquarters. We are dealing with a 110-year-old furniture factory. From a layperson's perspective, this feels like we're trying to fit a square peg into a round hole. This is not as popularly espoused a philosophical debate on intermingling of city personnel. I've not had that talk with really anybody. What I hope is that we're on the same page of having a public safety headquarters that meets today's standards for decades to come. Right now, the budget is $15 million for renovation. I'm not sure anyone in this room can say that that is an accurate figure that includes both the interior and the exterior. My hope is we can pause the process, open the books, get a fresh set of eyes to figure out if this is the right fit for this particular property. I get it, the $29 million in bonds have already been issued. This brings us to the sale of the Bloomington Police Department. A vote might be coming to you next week on this. This is something you can't control, and even before this 100-year-old deed issue hit the Herald Times, I question the timeline and still do. The issue will likely come, and I hope we realize that this is not a Sophie's Choice about fire stations impacted by decision, by this decision. Waiting simply does not preclude action from the next council to have a more vivid picture when it comes into view. And finally, I want to point out, this is our second-to-last time together, and I'm more of an Irish goodbye type of person. I've had the good fortune of working in the advocacy division at the chamber here for two years. Attending these meetings have been an honor and one of my favorite aspects of my job. Don't get me wrong, I complain about the agenda items, the length of time, and the get-on-with-it aspect of it. It's been a bit of the wide world of sports, the thrill of victory, the agony of defeat. I can't say the setbacks don't still hurt, but we heal up and we come back the next week. Part of that fulfillment rests in the elected officials themselves, who I have the utmost respect for. You put yourself out there every day. The next council should make no mistake, this is hard work. You have to be prepared. You have to be available. I've had the pleasure of serving with you on a commission, enjoying lunch or coffee, randomly calling about creed funds, showing up at your constituent meetings, tucking your arm off at the YMCA, and even being part of awkward email chains. The council members here before me have treated me with respect, humor, and sometimes the perfect amount of disdain. We didn't always agree, but I'm reminded that chamber does not dictate city policy, nor should we. However, at the end of the day, we all want a better tomorrow for Bloomington. While a good number of you will not be serving the council next year, this does not mean you will not be serving in other capacities for our community. I'm reminded of my favorite political speech that I often turn to in times of transition, Senator Edward Kennedy in 1980 addressing the Democratic Convention, where he turned to concession speech and did something more, and I quote, "For all those cares have been our concern, the work goes on, the cause endures, the hope still, the hope still lives, and the dream shall never die." Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. M. G. Any additional comment? I'm not seeing any here in chambers. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom?
I do have one comment here from Sam Dove, who says the Enhanced Semiconductor says it wants to make $152 million investment in the now mostly vacant Cook Medical Property at 301 North Curry Pike, west of Bloomington, so that it can establish a microelectronics manufacturing and packaging facility there by 2029. Enhanced says that the company's planned investments will be mostly completed. The company's anticipated growth would mean 250 new jobs, paying an average of better than $100,000 a year, according to Enhanced. All that depends on a requested tax abatement from the Monroe County Government for each of the next 10 years. Enhanced is asking for a 100% abatement of the taxes associated with the personal property investments at its planned facility. Enhanced is not asking for any abatement of the taxes on the real property improvements that it makes. Personal property refers to movable assets like equipment, while real property means immovable assets like land and buildings. Winning easy approval from all three Monroe County Commissioners on Wednesday, and then I believe the comment cuts off. So that's all I have at the moment.
If Mr. Dove has additional comment to make, he's more than welcome to email that to us at his convenience. So, thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Lucas, or no?
Not that I see, no.
Okay. That'll conclude our second of two periods of public comment and take us to matters of council schedule. Mr. Lucas?
Yes. In tonight's meeting packet, a draft annual schedule for 2024 council meetings was, was provided. Tonight is an opportunity for the council to discuss that draft schedule as needed and to possibly consider adoption of that. I should note, for the members currently on council who will be serving next year, and for any watching that also will be serving next year, this schedule can be changed as needed next year with a majority vote to either add meetings, change the format. The draft schedule prepared for tonight largely follows the template that was adopted for 2023, including roughly three regular sessions per month. No scheduled committee meetings or work sessions. This does include four nights of departmental budget hearings in August and includes two budget advance meetings earlier in the year. I am happy to answer any questions about the schedule or to display it if necessary. Any deviations from the typical three regular session per month approach is noted on the, on the schedule itself.
Questions for Mr. Lucas? And thank you for your good work. This is a chore to assemble every single year, I know, so thank you for that. Seeing no questions, is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, no? Okay. Is there a motion related to the schedule?
Yes, I, I move that we adopt the 2024 draft annual council legislative schedule.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Just to note that I did alert the incoming new council members about the draft schedule and, and did emphasize to them that it could be changed if we wanted to with the new term, as we start the new term. And so they, they are aware of this. I didn't get any, I mean, I, I got some interest in, in kind of revisiting things when the term starts, but no solid, you know, suggestions to implement right now. So just wanted to mention that. And, oh, and also, I wanted to mention, of course, it's not in the text, but I wanted to make sure that everybody is clear that an item can go to a third reading. So if, after the first discussion of an item during second reading, there is a need for more information or more time for deliberation, then it can go to a third reading. That's been true this year as well, but it's, it's something that, that we're not, not very used to doing, so I thought I would mention that.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Volan?
I appreciate everything Councilmember Piedmont Smith said. I just wanted to point out that third reading really should be the default, so as to not put pressure on council members to decide already, and that if the council wishes to discharge something in second reading, they can, but that, that should be the, the, the option that's exercised rather than, so that people can assume that there's going to be time to deliberate. It's something for the future council to consider, is that it puts actually even more pressure to decide already than the schedule we used to do before 2023. So something for the new council to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Flaherty?
Sure, I'll wait into the discussion too, because it's kind of fun. I appreciate what Councilmember Volan shared, and I think in fact, when we were starting to think about having regular sessions as the regular cadence to allow some more flexibility and some benefits, like having meeting minutes for the substantive discussion, we debated mechanisms to sort of make that more of a default and kind of went round and round about the options. And what I kind of ended up landing on, because they were all clunky in one way or another, was there should maybe be a culture of a willingness to go to third reading if any member would like, or, and, and so we, we had, again, thought about formalizing that. I'll mention, Mr. Askins in the audience, I think, has recently written an op-ed about this as well, advocating for like a slightly different approach and shift where we would actually have substantive discussion at first reading. And first reading requires, I believe, was it unanimous consent to consider adoption that night and a two-thirds majority to pass on the same night it's introduced. And so we could, with a minor change to city code, allow substantive discussion that could nevertheless sort of default into a second reading. The reason we, and we thought about that, and the reason we chose not to do that at the time, or at least the reason why I chose not to advocate for it, is, is a kind of a, a longer-standing notion of, of public notice, that there are people who tune into these meetings on a regular basis, don't really consult the agenda in advance, and that the idea of a first reading where there is no substantive discussion facilitated sort of public notice and anticipation to prepare for engagement. I'm not opposed to considering that, that, that change, but I wanted to note, these have all kind of been discussed in the constellation of possibilities, and I think we should continue to discuss them with the new members next year as well, and I appreciate what Councilmember Piedmont Smith shared about, about revisiting this with our, with our new colleagues. So happy to support this schedule.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick thoughts. I am a fan of the way we changed things a little bit this year. I felt it was maybe a bit of an easier lift for staff to attend all the sessions. I do want to check with incoming council members and maybe have this discussion next year about changing the budget hearing process, I think, four nights that are incredibly long and very hard. And we have multiple new council members coming in with kiddos in school, so just want to make sure the recess really coincides with summer recess for those kiddos. So, that's it.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Volan?
Just to clarify, my comment was only on the fact that this year's schedule sort of called for, I mean, the whole point is deliberation, as Councilmember Flaherty said, and I take his point, and I agree, that we should be erring on the side of deliberation. So my comment about third readings only pertains if council decides to retain this schedule in the future. And just to piggyback on Councilmember Rosenbarger's comment, I think that the, the hard part of Budget Week isn't the four-hour meetings, because we have had more than our share of those, it's that we have them four days in a row on one week. That's the hard part, is we're all accustomed to dealing with council, long council meetings one day a week. To have them four, I mean, again, in my first term, I think Councilmember Rallo's first full term, Budget Week wasn't a week, it was over two weeks. It was maybe two or three days over each of two weeks. That's how we handled the Plexus debate in 2021. So just making it easier for everyone, not the least of whom are council members, to attend meetings and be able to fully deliberate on things calls for a longer process overall, more like a month than like a week or two weeks. So I trust that the new council is going to work it out, and I'm looking forward to seeing how they do it. I just wanted to, to clarify that my comment about third readings had to do with the current schedule and not the schedules we had prior to when we had every other week. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. Will you please call the roll? Councilmember Volan?
Abstain.
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Sorry.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Smith?
Abstain.
Thank you. That passes 6-0-2. Are there any other items of business this evening, or any other items we need to take up? Seeing none, thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.